Worldwide Podcast.
Hey, family. This is Paula G. I'm Paula G. And this is the late night special edition of Positive Power double X I. So glad that you all have joined us. Hope you've had a wonderful day or about to have a wonderful day, depending on what time you are listening to this podcast. Blessings to each and every one of you. We want to give a shout out and a thank you to our sponsors for today's show, Pastor Paul Kelly. We want to make sure that each and every one of you support him and tune in on Tuesday evenings at nine fifteen for pastors time Bible study and also on Saturday mornings, next man up, ten AM, next man up with Pastor Paul Kelly. Also, he has his Bible colleges up and coming, y'all. And then we're going to have more information about that as that unfolds. Also, make sure you check out his book on Amazon. It's Homelessness in the Church. Wow, I didn't know that. You can get that in paperback form or Kindle form as well. A powerful book, powerful story. So you want to make sure that you reach out and support our wonderful Pastor Paul Kelly and First Lady Marcia Kelly. Also, our sponsor for this show today, Ms. Danette Watson. And you can visit her website, danettewatson.com. That's D A N E T watson.com for a total weight loss health program and plan. So, once again, we want to thank our sponsors so very much for their sponsorship of this special edition of the Late Night Positive Power double X I with yours truly, Paula G. And today I have with me a gentleman who I'm excited to have this conversation with. He is Councilman Candidate for the Fourth District Baltimore County, Mr. Derek A. Burnett Senior. How are you today, sir?
Great, Paula. It's a pleasure, privilege, and a blessing to be here amongst you today.
And I would say the same likewise, likewise. So tell our audience a bit about Derek Burnett. We want to know a little bit about Derek Burnett. Who is Derek Burnett? And on June four, between June fourteenth and the twenty first, which is early voting here in the Baltimore area, and Election Day on Tuesday, June twenty sixth, why should I push that button, pull that lever, make that selection? But first of all, tell us a little bit about who you are.
Definitely. Let's go back to talk about who I am, what was my basis, my foundation for my success. I'm a product of a two-parent household, which I think is mandatory, not mandatory, but it was during our time, it was one of those things that that our community was made of, up holistically. My father was in the military, retired Army Sergeant Major. My mother worked for the government. I'm the oldest of three, three sons.
So you're a military brat.
A military brat. I've lived in about, I'm gonna say thirteen different areas during the course of his career. I was born in Cincinnati, Ohio. My youngest brother was born in Maine. My middle brother was born in Georgia. So we had a staunch military background, highly disciplined, highly favored.
And what was his rank again?
Sergeant Major. He retired as Sergeant Major.
Sergeant Major doesn't play.
No nonsense.
Not at all. Not at all.
But it served us well because all of us were successful personally in our own individual endeavors. All of us have families. All of us own our own homes. All of us have our own careers. It's unfortunate he passed about thirteen years ago, but the fact remains that he had a definite effect on who we are, whoms we are, and how we related to our community.
Where were some of the places that you lived as a child? I know there's a lot. Because you know they have, you know that saying, what branch of service was he?
He's Army.
Army. So you know, you can plug in any branch, but you know, the saying is the Army, home is where the Army sends you.
Pretty much. Pretty much. We lived in Maine, New Jersey, Ohio, Georgia.
Just kind of all over.
Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much up and down the East Coast. At one time, we were supposed to go to Oklahoma, but the housing was backed up, like eighteen months.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Now, I spent that time in my grandmother's house back in Cincinnati. So that was great, too. Because I got to interact more with my grandmother and grandfather as a young child, which had a great influence on my development as well.
Right. And I think that's important to emphasize as, you know, being around family, but also being a part of a military family and having moved that much. You know, the one of the benefits of, you know, we use the term of endearment. We say Army brat or military brat. We do, use it as a term of endearment. Also, is to, you have a foundation of diversity and understanding of different people and different cultures and different points of view, which is very instrumental in the path and the journey that you're on, you know, today as well.
That definitely was the case. We just happened to have the opportunity. His last designated point of assignment was Baltimore. And I've been here in Baltimore over forty years. So I call Baltimore my home. Even though I was, I was born in Cincinnati, I called Baltimore my home. And you're right. I was always, when I was younger, let's say up to fourteen, I was always a new kid in the block.
Right. And you always had to adjust.
You always had to adjust. You always had to adapt. But like you say, you always had to interact with different cultures, different opportunities, different individuals, and be able to blend.
Right. And think on your feet because you're in different environments. And what's important in one environment, what's a priority in one environment, may not be the case in another environment. So you have to be able to be flexible and open and, yeah.
Right. And that served me well because it gave me an opportunity to be able to listen more to my surroundings, you know, and so I can adapt accordingly, you know. So that was great. I mean, we first moved here in Baltimore. We lived in Dundalk for like two years.
Oh, yeah. I know Dundalk.
On the other side of town. It was closer to his point of work at Fort Hollibur before it was shut down. My mother was working in Social Security, so she was making the drive every day, you know, through the tunnel. And we know that one gonna last.
Mama wasn't doing that for a minute.
My father always taught me, happy wife, happy life.
Words of wisdom. All this wisdom you got at a young age.
So we relocated to Woodlawn, five minutes away from her place of employment. And I grew up in a great neighborhood. And when I say great, I mean, it was awesome, known as Woodmore. And it was a community built of hardworking families, two-parent households. And to this day, I'm connected with members of my community. I mean, and I left physically living in Woodmore. Let's say, back in, let's say, eighty-four, eighty-five. But I still have roots there because that's where I grew up. That's where I met a lot of the people that I know still today. I still know their parents that lived there. I know some people who've lived there over forty or fifty years. It was one of the first, I'm gonna say, major enclaves on the suburbs of Baltimore, right on the edge, where you had African-Americans settle. I think it was because of the close proximity to Social Security, which was a major employer in that particular community. But Woodmore has generated and produced professionals in every aspect and every career. I bet you I can name somebody that's doing anything, from an astronaut, doctors, lawyers, financiers, stockbrokers, engineers, architects. I mean, I could just go through my rolodex, somebody from the neighborhood. So that was a great side of the community and it gave me a great foundation. And even though academically and athletically, you know, we were always touted, let's say, as county boys when we used to play basketball. I'm a big basketball fan. And we would always play guys from the city. And I guess they would try to come out and test our metal.
Right.
And it's many times that sending back in town, we say five new and a better crew.
I like that. Five new and a better crew.
Y'all get back in the car, go back in town. But I had some great times. I met a lot of people. Sports was something that exposed me to many sides of the city, you know, playing sports. You get to meet a lot of different people, just all over the city.
So you really, I mean, just in listening to your upbringing and your background, you really have some wonderful, strong values as your foundation. Your father being military, learning, disciplined, no nonsense. I would dare say him demonstrating how to operate as a man under pressure, under certain circumstances, you know, as well. Your mom, you know, a working spouse and a military spouse and demonstrating also, you know, discipline and structure and hard work, time management, all those things. You also mentioned listening and, you know, as a military child, developing, you know, listening skills and being able to be flexible and to adjust and adapt pretty much on a dime. Because sometimes those, you know, those deployments or PCS moves can kind of come back to backs. So being able to really be flexible, you know, as far as that is concerned. And then your Woodlawn, Woodmere community, just the closeness and knowing community and understanding community and what goes on in the community and just the heartbeat of the community. So some really good foundation.
It was great. It's part of my campaign platform was that unity within the community will elevate us all. And that's something that we have. And unfortunately, I don't think that's something that we have now.
Right now, yeah.
I think we're kind of dispersed and divided in so many different ways.
And we've got to kind of.
And we got to come back. I say, we got to re-circle the wagons, come back to what's worth improving.
Right, right. And we're going to expound on that on the second half of this. We're going to expound on that. So you had a strong background, a strong upbringing. What about your school years or college years, twenties, thirties?
Yeah, I, as I was saying, you know, at the time, I had these aspirations of playing basketball. I played some college basketball on the community college level. But I was always a great student, you know, so I called myself the ultimate student athlete. I went to community college at Baltimore County Community College. I played there. I got a degree in architectural engineering. Then I transferred to Hampton University. At the time, it was Hampton Institute.
All right, yes. I still have trouble with that. Hampton Institute, Hampton University.
That's another story for another time. That's a show in itself. But yeah, I got a professionally credited degree in architecture, Bachelor of Architecture. It was a five-year program at Hampton University, which served me well. Realistically, that's, you know, architecture is the ultimate stem career. And I say that because not just stem, but steam. Architecture is the study of technology, engineering, art, math, and music combined. So you have steam, but you got to, you got to stem, but you have to add steam in there. Because realistically, a great building has a musical rhythm to it. You could look at it vertically. You could look at it horizontally. A great designed building has a rhythm to it.
Has a rhythm to it.
Music is involved.
There's that rhythm.
Definitely.
And we're going to continue that conversation on the flip side about that rhythm, about that structure. We're going to talk a bit about your campaign, what your platform is, and why we should vote for you in the coming week, almost week, week and a half.
Wow, less than a week. The coming days, early voting starts June fourteenth.
We are having a conversation here today on this late night special edition of Positive Power double X I. We are talking with Councilman Candidate for the Fourth District Baltimore County, Mr. Derek A. Burnett Senior. I'm Paula G. and we will be back in a moment.
You're listening to Do or Slide Worldwide Podcast. You're listening to Do or Slide Worldwide Podcast.
And we are back. If you are just joining us, I am Paula G. And this is a late night special edition of Positive Power double X I. And the sponsors for today's episode are our beloved Pastor Paul Kelly and First Lady Marcia. Make sure that you tune in Tuesday nights for powerful Bible study by Pastor Kelly, nine fifteen. Also, he's back at it on Saturday mornings at ten AM with next man up. This is a busy man, let me tell you. He's in the process of birthing a Bible college. There's going to be some great opportunities for you to pursue studies in Bible study and theology. And also, he's an author. He's a busy man. He's an author. His book, Homelessness in the Church. Wow, I didn't know that. It's available in paperback and on Kindle. So please make sure you come out and support our Pastor Kelly with the many wonderful things that he's doing. Also, Danette Watson, our Total Weight Loss Health Program. You can visit her at D A N E T watson.com. Make sure you check her out as well. We thank them so very much. At the top of the show, we opened with Men of Worship, their song, Call on God, ministered to us at the top of the show. And then we just listened to our very own Mr. Dwayne Gott with Help Me to Pray. And we were talking, we have been talking with Councilman Candidate for the Fourth District Baltimore County, Mr. Derek A. Burnett Senior. And prior to the break, he gave us a little bit of background, how he's the product of a two-parent household. His father was in the military. So you know, those of you listening who are military, he's a military brat, you know. We like our military brats. His mom also worked for Social Security. So he had a good, strong foundation from his family and a lot of values that he learned from his parents about discipline and time management and from his father, just, you know, what it means to be able to think on your feet and working under pressure, being able to stay focused and working under pressure. And as a military child, moving around from station to station, learning to be flexible, learning diversity, learning different communities, moving from culture to culture, and also being a good listener, you know, because as a military child, when you're moving around a lot, you got to be able to listen and absorb the area around you. And then the community that he once lived in, Woodlawn Community, just understanding the dynamics of the community.
Woodmore, yeah, Woodmore.
Yes, Woodmore, I'm sorry. And just understanding the community. So just a great foundation of skills and talents and gifts and values. So that brings us to the second part of our program here is, you know, once again, Derek, on June, between June fourteenth and June twenty first is early voting here in the Baltimore area. Election Day is June twenty-sixth. Speak to the voters and tell us why we should go and.
Okay, getting back to thinking on your feet. My father taught that to me very early. I'm a chess player. He taught me how to play chess, or at least set up the board when I was five.
Yes.
So I would watch him and his friends play chess and learn how to play chess. So being a chess player, you have to think two or three steps ahead to be an ultimately.
Oh, I like that.
Good chess player. And I've said that in one of my candidates forum, I'm the type of candidate that's going to be a chess player, somebody that plays chess, not just regular chess. I'm talking about three-dimensional chess. Three-dimensional chess, you have three different boards. So you have to think vertically as well as horizontally. And that goes hand in hand with who I am and my professional being an architect. You have to think vertically as well as horizontally to make things work. And I'm a proactive type candidate. And I'm not, I'm not a reactive type candidate. And I say, I'm not going to be playing checkers. I'm not going to wait for somebody else to make a move, for me to make a move. And realistically, our community is so far behind as it relates academically, educationally, environmentally. We have to have candidates in place that can think two or three steps ahead so that we can position ourselves as a community to be sustainable and successful. So with that being said, you know, I transitioned from Hampton. I worked twelve years with the Army Corps of Engineers as a project architect. I was a Civil Engineering Officer in the Air National Guard. I designed and managed one of the largest projects in the Baltimore District Engineering Division of the Army Corps of Engineers while I was in my tenure. It was like a thirty million dollar, two hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility. I've done about projects in about eight different countries throughout the world. So I have a regional perspective. I have an international perspective. I have a professional perspective that I want to bring back to the community. You know, I'm not just talking to be talking. I'm talking and actually walk the walk from experience. My brother has an IT company. All of us was pretty in tune academically as it relates to math. We used to call him Rain Man. So he had an IT company that at one time employed eight hundred people. So during the transition of me leaving my government job to start my own little design build company, you know, I've done about, worked on about eight different churches in the community. I've done some schools, some custom homes, childcare centers, things of that nature. But those are projects that, you know, they come and go. Realistically and economically, for our community to build sustainable wealth, we have to be involved with things that are residual. And I'm trying to bring that information, knowledge, and past performance to the community, to the children, to the adults of the community. We got to have more than jobs. I've always been told a job stands for just over broke. You got to go back to work, you know. You may not like that job, but you got to sustain yourself. You have to be, you got to live. So you got to do what you got to do to survive. But when you're in a career that you're passionate about, that you feel adamantly about, it's not a job. You know, it's a passion. So I convey that to a lot of the kids and the young adults that I interact with on the mentoring levels. And I do a lot of mentoring as well in the community.
Excellent, excellent.
Where I talk to young kids and I try to give them direction and some purpose and try to just make them become more awakened as to what their potential is and what their passion should be. Don't let just anybody push you into something because that's something they wanted you to do.
Right.
I remember when I first started, I told my older cousins, some of them, I wanted to be an architect. And they didn't know architect. So they didn't have anything associated with it. They would always tell me, oh, you ain't going to be no architect. But I would never let them, you know, disturb, disturb me or discourage me.
Right. Because you're actually in a position now to be an architect in a sense that once, you know, if the voters go and do the right thing, you will be in position to build, you know, in the community.
Yeah, for community.
Yeah, so what are some of the things?
On a grand level versus on an individual perspective.
So what are some of the things that you hope to achieve?
Well, realistically, you know, I've got five campaign platforms. Naturally, we got to address community and school safety. We got to do, I say, corporate and small business reinvestment. I have a big thing about corporate reinvestment where I believe corporations have a responsibility to reinvest in the communities of which they reside. And a lot of corporations aren't doing that. And they started, they initiated that in Baltimore as a result of the Freddie Gray riots. They have this program that John Hopkins initiated called Be Local. And Be Local has raised about, let's say, about eighty-five million dollars in the last couple of years from corporations donating monies back to the Baltimore city area to provide co-op programs, after-school programs, summer internships, and things of that nature for people of the community to interact, to feel a part, to develop some sense of hope. The riots was a result of frustrations and a lack of hope, you know. So we have to extend that, you know, throughout the nation, not just Baltimore City, not just Baltimore County. But we have to extend that throughout the nation. Make them be responsible. I know, for instance, as a result of the recent tax cut that our president initiated, I know one corporation in the area was generating like three hundred and eighty-six million dollars every quarter. Now, they have a twenty-six percent, twenty-six, no, twenty-one percent tax break. That twenty-one percent increased their profits, their bottom line to like four hundred and forty million dollars in a quarter. So they increased it by like eighty million dollars. You got eighty million dollars per quarter. That's an additional three hundred and twenty million dollars that they have access to.
That's, yeah, that's overwhelming.
That a percentage of that realistically should come back to the community. They taking the money and running it. You know, they taking that money and reinvesting in other opportunities for them to make more money. But to me, wouldn't it make sense if you took some of that money that you just got a tax break on to reinvest back in the communities of which you reside, create after-school programs, summer, summer co-ops, summer jobs, internships, things of that nature?
Because you also talked about educational enrichment as well.
Educational enrichment, yeah.
And economic empowerment.
Right. So those things, to me, seem like it's kind of no nonsense. But until you bring it to their attention, you know, as a candidate, I want to bring those type of things to their attention. I'm not one of them kind of guys that go along and get along just to say I'm a part of the team.
Right.
And realistically, we, I think we're in a position now where we're trading titles and, let's say.
Just a lot of what's going on.
Symbolism. We're trading titles and symbolism to say that we're in a position of power, but really, we're still powerless.
So speak to the voters. The voters are listening. Speak to the voters, and they're watching. Speak to the voters and tell them what it is that you look to do for them if they vote for you. What your vision is.
Oh, first and foremost, we have to incorporate educational enrichment. I say that because a lot of our kids are being educated, but they're not adequately being educated to adapt to the needs of our community. On the IT side, I used to do business development with my brother. Right now, in the cybersecurity industry, there's about eight hundred thousand unfilled positions in cybersecurity. And they projected to be one point five million in the next three years, which therefore you creating a cybersecurity army, all right, of employees. You know, our kids aren't being exposed to the industry at all. You know, you can go get a certification, an A-plus certification, and it introduces you to the IT information systems and make about fifty or sixty thousand dollars in about eight months.
So you'd be looking at ways in which our kids can be exposed to.
I'm looking at ways to incorporate some of the contacts that I've initiated and made relationships with during the course of me doing business development with him. Companies like Northwood Grumman, companies like Lockheed Martin, Sayak. And you know, some of those contractors of the huge government agencies, got to bring them back to our community and say, look, we're going to develop this cybersecurity after-school program here in this liberty road corridor. And instead of us always generating and developing. And instead of us always generating and developing, let's say entertainers and athletes, we want to make a, a real world Wakanda out here.
Right. Real world.
Real world Wakanda.
Yes.
Where we can have kids aspire. Okay, it's okay to be a computer science technologist or a computer science engineer. And we have a lot of engineers. Baltimore has one of the greatest engineering programs at Morgan State University in the country. But we just need to expose more of our children to that, more of our adults to that.
And give them that exposure.
Give them that exposure.
You know, we have a couple, you know, our time goes so fast always. Talk to us a little bit about cultural and generational collaboration.
Okay, cultural and generational collaboration. In our particular district, there's like ten different cultures that live in our district. You know, from all over the world, you know, from Africa, from India, from, from Asia, from, from, from the Middle East. And, and the only thing realistically that ties us together is, is money. We don't come together on one platform to do anything as a community. And if we did come together, let's say if there's ten different cultures, see my ten fingers, right, we're all moving in our separate ways, going our own way, trying to make a way for our own culture. But if we came together, look at this, we came together as, that's a powerful entity that we need to bring together and try to create something together.
So you're looking at ways to bring all of those together.
Bring all of those together.
Yes. Excellent, excellent.
And on the, let's say the generational side. Generationally, we're separated. Our seniors are separated from our children if you're not directly related to them. Some of our seniors are afraid to speak to fifteen-year-olds, fourteen-year-olds from fear of backlash. When I was growing up, there's no way that an adult would be afraid to speak to a child. And nowadays you have adults afraid to say anything to children and that's not good.
So you're looking to change that and close that gap.
Connect that, you know, cause, cause like you said, when I was living with my grandmother, my grandfather, that's added wisdom that's added to a child's life.
And that's, it's really huge, that generational collaboration, because it's, it's not only within each culture, but generational, as you were saying, with the cultural collaboration, the generational, generational collaboration that comes along with that as well, because different cultures view, you know, the generations differently. The, you know, they, they interact with the generations differently. So just, it, it, it sounds like it's a multitude of just meshing and bringing together.
Bringing together. And getting back to the cultural, our kids gotta learn how to speak more than one language.
Oh, that's huge. Yes, that's huge.
I spoke Spanish. I spoke a little French. I mean, I was learning a little French and English.
Yeah, yeah. Being a military child.
Being a military, yeah. I went to Peru and South, and South America on one of my deployments. I ended up with a better room as a young captain because I spoke the language to the receptionist at the desk. The colonel did.
And I believe, you know, and I, I could be wrong, because you know, Paula G. doesn't know everything. But I believe we may be the only, if maybe one of the few, or maybe the only the country where the majority of people are not bilingual, you know, and I mean, you know, you're talking about your, your South America, your African continent, you know, Europe. Majority of, of people, you know, in these different parts of the world speak at least their own language and a second language of maybe, a maybe neighboring country. You know, of course, a lot of, you know, countries speak English as well, but I, I think we're one of the few that are just, you know, monolingual.
We're behind, especially since technology has connected the world. And, you know, we used to be like, if you was, you were going to college, you was trying to get a job, you was competing with those in your particular region for that particular job. Unfortunately, today via the internet, you're competing against competition from all over.
From all over, all over.
And our kids have to be informed and they have to embrace that when they apply themselves academically. They have to understand they're competing against the world.
Right, right. So can you tell us a little bit, and I think we have a little bit more time, a little bit more time. Tell us a bit about, because we're gonna get a little technical here, because these, because these things are important. Okay, early voting between June fourteenth and June twenty first. Election Day is Tuesday, June twenty sixth. And you're running for the fourth district, but I understand there are several districts here.
Well, there's actually seven county councilmatic districts in Baltimore County. But realistically, there's only, there's only one minority councilmatic district where predominantly the population is minority. And it happens just to be the one that I'm running for.
Okay, and that would be the fourth district. Okay. And voters can come out, the early voting is the fourteenth through the twenty first.
Yeah, ten o'clock to eight o'clock. Early voting.
Okay, so we can go before work, we can go after work and.
Ten o'clock. It's not before work, but they can come at ten o'clock. And that lasts until eight o'clock. But during the actual election, I think you can go before work. I think it starts at seven during the actual election on the twenty sixth.
Yeah, usually it's. Yeah. And we just urge people to plan accordingly, because you know, a lot of times I hear, oh, the weather, I couldn't go vote. Oh, my boss won't let me off. And I believe employers have to let people off to go vote. So we gotta think ahead. We gotta plan accordingly.
Right, they go to chess playing.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We really have to be, you know, strategic about this if we want to, want change. And I know a lot of people were probably discouraged by the last, you know, our last major election. But we cannot let that discourage us. We cannot sit home. We cannot say we're not gonna vote. We cannot say it doesn't matter. Because it all does.
Yeah, you can see it does matter where we are today. Definitely. Anything else I can expand?
Yes, yes. Well, we just want to, we want to make sure the voters know, is there a website that they can go? Cause you know, sometimes people just don't know where to go, what to do.
You can go to my webpage, it's W W W vote, V O T E, D A B senior. Twenty eighteen, vote D A B senior twenty eighteen.
Okay, and then you also have, you also have Twitter.
I have Twitter, yeah. I have an email account. Naturally, I'm on Facebook.
Okay, so your Twitter is hashtag vote, V O T E, D as in David, A as in Alpha, B as in Bravo, S as in Sam, R two zero one eight. And that's the Twitter. And then Facebook is Derek Burnett. D E R R I C K B as in Bravo, U R N E T T. And you know, the elections that we have coming up, and I think people don't maybe understand the importance of, for lack of a better word, I call them the smaller elections, you know, people come out for, people come out for, there you go, community, local. Because that's the foundation for how people wind up, you know, well, most people wind up in, in the White House. It starts at these.
Grassroots level.
The grassroots levels, you know, the grassroots level.
I'm gonna be honest, I don't have aspirations to go to the White House. I would like to do whatever I can do to help, help benefit our community, create a sustainable solution that's gonna last beyond my lifetime, beyond, beyond my children's lifetime and beyond, beyond their children's lifetime. Cause realistically, when you design a building, it usually lasts about a hundred years, you know, fifty years, even though I only get paid once. I don't know how they let that happen.
I know, right?
Back in the day, I'm like, man, what was y'all thinking about? Yeah, I even asked one of my professors that. He looked at me all confusing. I was like, man, anyway, moving right along.
Right. I got you. I got you.
I'm gonna design a building that's gonna stand for a hundred years. They're gonna pay me once.
We gotta regroup on that one.
And build a sustainable community. Right now, I don't think our community is sustainable. You know, realistically, unfortunately, the way our community was, was designed, even going back to the Red Line days, the way they kind of pushed African-Americans in certain parts of the community. They, they allowed us to become bedroom communities. When you become a bedroom community, you really don't have a sustainable platform because there's no corporations or.
Oh, that's interesting. Never thought about that.
Or within that particular thing. So you can bring in, let's say, huge restaurants that's gonna operate during the day. Most restaurants operate on a lunchtime and dinner clientele.
You're right, you're right.
Breakfast, lunch and dinner. If you don't have a huge corporation within your community to help sustain that restaurant during those lunchtime hours and those dinner hours, you won't have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant in the community. A lot of times our, our community don't understand that. But, but we need, we need to come together and demand those type of things. So I already told somebody that got my candidate and I was running against. We have a shopping center in the community or a potential mall. And they've already got it established. They've already picked their stores. But, but on the, let's say the MBE, the business side of things, even though it was a private entity, I felt like they should have demanded minority participation in that project. We're talking about a hundred, ten million dollar project. And that, that takes the bill and they're gonna generate hundreds of millions of dollars once it's built. And we got a, we had a community of like thirty percent minorities in our community. The MBE participation level is, let's say, right now it's established at fifteen percent. Before the state is established at twenty-five percent. Why is that?
Right, right. So we gotta, we got work to do. We got work to do. We got to do.
And I'm a, I'm only a three-month candidate and I figured that out. And the guy running against it been in office for three years and hasn't addressed that. So that's one of the issues I have.
Yes. Well, and you know, it's like we said at the, the, the top of the show, you know, that with the background that you have and the foundation that you have and the skills, the experience that you bring to the platform, that our voters between June fourteenth and June twenty first are early voting and Election Day on June twenty sixth, that Councilman, who's now a candidate for the Fourth District of Baltimore County, Derek A. Burnett Senior. Those of you who are in the Fourth District of Baltimore County, do the right thing, do the right thing. We want to thank you for being with us today. We want to thank our sponsors, Danette Watson. You can visit her, D A N E T watson dot com for Total Weight Loss Health Program. And also our Pastor Kelly, Pastor Paul Kelly, Great Bible Teaching on Tuesday evenings at nine fifteen and PM. And also on Saturday mornings, next man up at ten AM. He's got an up and coming Bible college to be announced. Stay tuned for that. Also, his book, Homelessness in the Church. Wow, I didn't know that. It's available in paperback and Kindle. Thank you so much to our guests this evening, Derek A. Burnett Senior. Shouts out to Batman himself, Jerry Voice Live. I'm Paula G. This is a late night special edition of Positive Power twenty-one. Can you feel the power?
Can you feel the power? Can you feel the power? Feel the power of double X I. You are listening to Jerry Voice Live Worldwide Podcast. Can you feel the?